First item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a means of expediting routine matters which come before the commission for approval. The consent portion of the agenda is approved by one non-debatable motion. If any commissioner wishes to remove an item from the consent portion of the agenda, that item becomes the first order of business on the regular agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve today's consent agenda. Consisting of Item A, consideration of auditor-approved claims for payment for July 18th, 2018 through August 7th, 2018. Item B, consideration of special commission meeting minutes of July 10th, 2018, and regular commission meeting minutes of July 17th, 2018. Item C, consideration of administrative adjustments on real property. D, consideration of administrative adjustments personal property. Item E, consideration of applications for property tax abatement. Item F, consideration of the FY 2018 Five-County Association of Governments Contract Amendment Number One with Washington County Council on Aging for Aging and Nutrition Services. And Item G, consideration of renewal of education affiliation agreement between Dixie State University and Washington County for health screening and educational opportunities at senior centers by nursing students. That would be my motion.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We'll proceed to the regular agenda items for consideration. The first item is consideration of purchase requests. The clerk auditor and raise here to present those.
Okay. The first one is for the fair, and it's for sound equipment and technicians for the indoor stage, outdoor, derby, boxing, and the laser show and the parade. That's a total of $12,500. The next one is for the sheriff's office. It's for a washer extractor and a gas dryer, which also includes installation and freight, and that's a total of $26,684. Those are industrial appliances, by the way. Next one is for equipment installation in some new police vehicles, and that's a total of $25,204. But they are going to try and reuse some of the equipment so that total cost may come The next one is for the Rose Department, and it is for part of their construction projects for mobilization to and from job sites for oil and supplies, and that's a total of $11,924.84. And there are a couple small credits on that because our maintenance shop wound up fixing one of their trucks. They credited us for the parts and labor on that. The next one is for the sports and outdoor recreation for the NJCAA event sponsorship for a total of $20,000. And the final one is for the German guide for funding project, and that's a total of And unless there's questions, that is all.
Brittany, is this the last year for the National Junior College Championships? How long does that go? Joe?
One more year.
One more year? Thank you. Yeah, it's a great... Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion in support of the purchase request as outlined by our purchasing agent, Ray Boyer.
I'll go ahead and second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Number two is consideration of personal property penalty reduction request, and...
Not a Dell.
Not a Dell. I have a Dell on my list, but...
My name is Jeanette Dickinson. I'm with Personal Property Officer's Office. We have a business who would like to request a reduction of penalties for filing the 2018 personal property after the due date of... They filed on June 1st, so there were 12 days between the due date and filing. I think you have a copy of the letter. She made three points in her request. First year they have filed late, verified that. She is the only employee responsible for filing and paying. And her mother passed away on the night of... She required immense amount of care prior to passing. She had to help her father with the funeral arrangements. He's 86. And then there was a lot of paperwork to be done in the weeks following.
Traditionally, I believe we've done a half percent per day. We don't waive the full amount.
If we found a good cause.
If we found a good cause, yeah. So I know losing a loved one like that would be a pretty good cause.
Mr. Chairman, I would also like to make a finding that they've actually paid late penalty, and so this would be for a refund because it is for the death of her mother, and she is the individual responsible for filing. I feel that they've met that threshold of special need, and also I think that we should be consistent in how we've granted these so that they don't look like they're arbitrary or capricious. And so I would make a motion that we do as we've done in previous, and I believe that is we've forgiven half of it, haven't we, Eric? 0.5% per day, is it 1%?
Well, so it's a 10% flat penalty, and so what you guys have done...
So we would go a 5% then. Okay. So I would, my motion would be that we cut the penalty in half.
Well, let me...
Wouldn't that be the same thing?
So the way that it works is if anybody's late, they pay a 10% late fee on their, on the full amount.
And then a penalty per day?
There's no daily penalty.
Just a...
It's just a 10%. So what you guys have done with the past couple that have come in is if you found good cause, you've said rather than do a 10% flat, we'll do a half percent per day.
Per day. And it was 12 days.
But at 6%.
So we would levy a 6%. So my motion would be for a 4% or a 40% reduction in the penalty, which would be consistent with...
Does that make sense to you, Ricky? Okay. I will second that motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Item number three is consideration of Resolution Number R-2018-2354, a resolution appointing board members to the Five-County Aging and Nutrition Services Advisory Board, and Commissioner Cox, you've been...
I would be happy to speak to this. Kay Reese, who has been a longtime employee of the county, she eventually retired, and we found other ways to put her to work. For the past several years, she's helped us on this Five-County Aging and Nutrition Services Advisory Board. She has resigned from that, and so I would like to pursuant to Resolution R-2018-2354, appoint Sandra Aikens for the balance of that term, which would expire on December 31st, 2018. That would be my motion.
Go ahead and second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number four is consideration of Resolution Number R-2018-2355, a resolution approving Tourism Advisory Board's recommendations to approve an integrated marketing agreement by and between Washington County and Grind Media LLC. And Joe, come up and please present this item.
So we came across an opportunity called the Bible of Bike Testing. It's a bike magazine, which is kind of the biggest magazine for cycling, mountain biking in the nation, and they approached us through recommendation from the state to feature Washington County as the destination of choice for their entire magazine, annual publication called the Bible of Bike Testing. So what that consists of, it'll have, it's 138-page kind of gear and trail and it's about mountain biking. And so it's a great opportunity for Washington County to feature a lot of the trail development that we've been investing in, as well as showcase just the beautiful surroundings of the area. So their exposure is fairly extensive. They have about 466,000 subscribers to this print publication, as well as it's advertised heavily through their social media channels, as well as their Facebook, or excuse me, their digital campaign. So I think it's a great investment, it's a $60,000 commitment to bring this publication and really put St. George on the map as far as the entire mountain biking community. I think it falls directly in line with the Red Emerald Initiative that the state is putting forward to attract higher-dollar visitors for a longer period of time, and that's exactly what this demographic falls into.
Mr. Chairman, I had an opportunity to attend the Tourism Tax Advisory Board meeting where this item was discussed, and we talked about the Red Emerald Initiative, and I do believe that this is congruent with those goals. But another thing that impressed me is we have some phenomenal mountain biking trails and approximately 300 miles of them in Washington County. And this gives us an opportunity for guests who come to the county to do their usual explore Zion thing, but spend some additional time seeing the rest of Washington County, and we've got a lot to show. And I just think this was great. The state of Utah wanted to extend this opportunity to Washington County for Bike Magazine to do this here. You know, Moab has a lot of popularity with mountain biking, but I think Washington County is quickly coming on the radar scope as well, and so I really think this is a great idea in line with that. And I don't have any questions. If you're okay, I'd make a motion in support of Resolution 2018-2355, a resolution approving Tourism Advisory Board recommendation to approve an integrated marketing agreement by and between Washington County and Grind Media LLC.
I will second that motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate you.
Item number five is consideration of Resolution Number R-2018-2356, a resolution approving a complete reduction of 2018 property tax for certain parcels owned by Rural Housing Development Corporation, EBA Self-Help Homes. And Eric Clark?
Yeah. The Self-Help Homes representative we've been working with apologized. He has offices in Provo, and he said he's happy to come down here, but the timing today just didn't work out. So I said that I'd just warn him. But this is something that you guys considered last year. Self-Help Homes is a program that allows people to put sweat equity into a home that wouldn't otherwise qualify for a conventional mortgage, but it allows families to get into homes a little normally would, and go into a home with that equity. It's a nonprofit. It has some properties in our county. It's sold several of them this year. Of these that are listed, I think there are nine properties, only two of them are still owned by Self-Help. Those have been sold. And so the way that this is worded, the tax would be forgiven for the portion of the year that they owned it, so that everything would be prorated. There are two parcels left that they still own. One of those is a larger parcel that they've been working subdivision process on. They're not quite there yet, but they're getting really close. And clearly they're making a good faith effort to... So with that background, you guys have the ability to reduce, to... What's the word for put off?
Completely abate.
Yeah, or completely abate property taxes when you find that there's a valid public interest.
So why don't they just get automatically as a nonprofit, like why? I can remember talking about it, but I can't remember.
Yeah, so it's in the past.
Yeah. It's how they're used, and because this land is being held and used and being developed. But I've had a chance to go and look at some of these homes and see what the progress is. And what I really would recommend is that we grant this relief. There is an acute shortage of low-cost housing in Washington County, and allowing... These are people who are like schoolteachers and other professions that we rely upon that they just don't earn enough money to qualify for some of these higher-priced mortgages, and being able to contribute sweat equity, and they do a pretty doggone good job. I went and looked down, and you could tell the sheet rock might have a wiggle in it or something, but these people are just proud as heck to get these homes, and they've worked hard for them. And so I make a motion in support of Resolution R-2018-2356, a resolution approving a complete reduction of 2018 property taxes for certain parcels owned by Rural Housing Development Corporation doing business as Self-Help Homes.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number six is consideration of Resolution Number R-2018-2356, a resolution approving an agreement with Election Systems and Software LLC for new election equipment and ongoing Mr. Haven's here.
Playin' old Kim's here, at least. Over the past couple of years, the state of Utah has been working to determine preferred vendor for new election equipment. The equipment that we currently use was purchased and put into service after the Bush-Gore election in Florida in the year 2000, so it's been around for between 10, 15 years or so, and it's reaching the end of its life, and it's no longer supported by the manufacturer. So the state has settled on ESNS as the vendor, and we have fallen in line with that. We've developed a list of equipment that we would need going forward, assuming that we're going to go by mail with some vote centers, starting with this November's election. We've compared equipment that we might need versus, say, what, Weber County, Davis County, Cache County, halfway similar counties. We think we've reached a good solution on what equipment we need, and so we have an agreement before you that specifies the equipment that we'd get. By getting this at this point, we'll be able to get that here and have that in service for the general election in November.
So this is kind of a big deal. I mean, we're switching to a vote-by-mail county.
We are. In the past, I've been hesitant to do that. We're one of the few counties that hasn't gone vote-by-mail exclusively, and my opinion has been that people should have a choice in how they vote, whether it's by mail or go to a polling location and vote. But for us to replace the equipment that we have piece for piece, we would have to put a lot of things on hold in the county to be able to purchase that kind of... We have 350 touchscreens that we can't afford to replace essentially, so the vote-by-mail equipment will be cheaper to work with.
But the way that I understand this, there will still be vote centers set up strategically where individuals could cast a ballot...
On a machine. Yeah, well, probably between six and 10 vote centers through, in places that we've had polling locations historically.
It's a big deal.
So this is on Election Day, and I know a lot of other counties have already made this switch. Do you have any angst about making this switch on Election Day, or do you feel you've got the support you'll need?
One of the good things about this, we're the only county that's switching between the primary and the general, so we'll have ESNS's, I don't know if we'll have their undivided attention or not, but we'll have their attention to help us through that. We used some of this equipment in the 2000, what's this, 2017, Washington City used some of the ESNS equipment as a trial, so we're a bit familiar with the equipment. And the way things are going with trying to obtain poll workers, and we have angst over a lot of things with elections, but we think this will be a good move for us.
One thing I do really like about this system, too, is it creates a paper trail, so it's not like someone could make it harder to do anything like tweak our equipment because it's all paper.
We had about, I'm going to, my memory, I'm not sure. I think we had around 11,000, nine or 11,000 mail-in ballots in the primary election, and we did that with the equipment that we have. It's relatively antiquated, and we got through that okay. And we could get through, if for some reason things didn't work here, if we had to use the equipment that we currently have and it still went by mail, we could make that work if it came right down to it, so.
Right.
Jim, I appreciate you studying this out. Every time I've had a question about this, you've been able to answer it, and so thanks for putting so much time in there.
We've been kind of dragging our feet and going, maybe kicking and screaming into the vote-by-mail thing, but I, it's, we're one of the few counties now that haven't done that, and I think that's where everyone's headed.
I want to express my appreciation as well, and I see Melanie Appel in our election clerk, and she's really been, I think, the tip of the spear for your office, even though you're the chief elected official over that. I know that she's worked really hard at it, so...
She's the brains behind out of us, too, so...
We're appreciative of both of you. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion in support of Resolution R-2018-2357, a resolution approving an agreement with Election System and Software LLC for new election equipment and ongoing support.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Maybe I'll just add one more thing with that. Most of the equipment that we're going to buy will be reimbursed either through state or federal funds. It'll require the county to pay that money upfront when we get the equipment, but we can seek reimbursement for all except about $5,000 or $6,000.
Major, major portion of that.
Yeah. Don't leave yet.
I'm staying.
Okay. Item number seven is consideration of Resolution Number R-2018-2358, a resolution approving an agreement with K&amp;H Election Services for ballot printing.
Historically, we have used Car Printing for our ballot printing services, and as have many counties across Utah done that. They're a Utah company. Lloyd Carr, who is the owner and operator of that business, probably knows more about election law maybe than the lieutenant governor's office does. He's been involved with printing ballots and knowing the law for years and years and years. He is getting a bit older, and his business is starting to wind down just a bit. Many of the counties in Utah have sought a different vendor, and as have we now, and this K&amp;H Election Services is in the northwest, either Washington or Oregon. I can't remember which one. But it's a service that many counties have now gone to for their printing. We did an RFP, and they were the selected vendor for our ballots, which now will be many more ballots than we were talking about historically with going by mail.
How many registered voters do we have?
70,000, Melanie. 75.
So they'd have to mail it. Well, okay. You recommend them.
We do.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion in support of Resolution Number R-2018-2358, a resolution approving an agreement with K&amp;H Election Services for ballot...
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number eight is consideration of Resolution Number R-2018-2359, a resolution approving the execution of an agreement between Washington County and Betty Lou Fonsbeck regarding transferring ownership of real property and approving the execution of a quitclaim deed transferring ownership of the parcel.
I don't know how much you want to know about this. This parcel was in this year's tax sale, and it was actually purchased in the tax sale, and my recommendation to the commission was that you didn't approve that sale. It's a small, little triangle piece of property in Bloomington that is inside someone's fence. How much do you want me to tell you?
Enough that...
So several years ago, at least, the property owner that has it fenced in now either put his fence in the wrong place, or he had already reached agreement with his neighbor to enclose more ground than he owned.
About how big of a piece of property are we talking about?
It's about 633 square feet.
Okay, it's a very, very small...
It goes from zero feet wide at the beginning to the back of the triangle, a few feet wide. I don't know exactly how the measurement is.
So it's just a little pie sliver.
A little pie sliver. And it's in the homeowner's fenced yard. So the homeowner that enclosed that eventually lost his home in foreclosure, and since the little parcel was a separate parcel number than where the home was, the little parcel was not encumbered by the home loan. So when he lost it in foreclosure, he didn't lose the little piece, and so it has remained in his ownership, but he hasn't been paying taxes because he's already lost the parcel. So it eventually got to the tax sale. Someone purchased that, maybe not knowing exactly what they were getting. The commission didn't approve that sale. I've contacted that homeowner, and we're anxious to get that back on the tax rolls and in the right ownership.
Tell me how you derived a price for a 600-square-foot piece of land.
So a couple of things to do with that. Our assessor office, in general, for administrative purposes, most parcels in the county have like a $1,000 minimum, but when they actually, when we look at a transaction between a willing buyer and a willing seller, it's somewhat less than that, and they agreed that $300 was about the right amount of money.
This is 2/100 of an acre.
2/100 of an acre. And also, the homeowner that has it enclosed in his lot believes that they paid for that when they got that in foreclosure. There wasn't, it wasn't like you're only going to get this over to the pie-shaped part, and the rest of it you're not going to get. So they believe also, you know, they paid for that at one time when they acquired ownership of the parcel.
Thank you for the explanation. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion in support of Resolution Number R-2018-2359, a resolution approving the execution of an agreement between Washington County and Betty Lou Fonsbeck regarding transferring ownership of real property and approving the execution of a quitclaim deed transferring ownership of the parcel.
I'll second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number nine is consideration of Resolution Number R-2018-2360, a resolution appropriating expenditures of funds collected as the unincorporated area of Washington County share of the recreation arts and park sales taps, or also known as the RAP tax. Nicole?
Yes, so back in February, we reached out to the different communities in the unincorporated areas for applications to be turned in in regards to improving different areas for public use in their communities utilizing the RAP tax. So we received the applications in, and at the time, Diamond Valley, as we looked theirs over, there was a few documents that we reached back out to them and requested that they provide to us before they were, they would be able to be considered. So we did a resolution, I believe, back in March or April for the other unincorporated areas and to be able to start their process for the year of using their RAP funding. And Diamond Valley recently got back with us and provided all the documentation necessary, and their overall request was about $25,970, and my recommendation commissioners today would be to, the recommendation is for $16,170, which would give them a good start with what they are wanting to do, and then they certainly, again, the next year can apply again for additional funding.
And they fixed the, I know what's going on that piece of property. It was some questions about who owned it, and that's all been resolved.
It needed to be nonprofit or publicly owned eligible for the RAP tax, and the piece of property that they were proposing to use was owned by the water company. And when we checked the water company's status, it wasn't everything on file as being a nonprofit, and they've subsequently corrected that, and I think that brings it in line with the requirements of the law and the voter initiative that we had on the ballot. And I think that Nicole's recommendation of $16,170 isn't, we don't want to do the whole project, but it's consistent and equitable with what's been granted to other communities of similar size.
That's correct.
And so I commend Nicole and the attorneys for working with the water company and getting this all so that it's legal and consistent with what our voters passed and the intent of that initiative. so that it's, it's legal and consistent with what our voters pass and the intent of that initiative. So thank you. I make a motion in support of resolution 2018-2360, a resolution appropriating expenditures of funds collected as the unincorporated as the unincorporated area of Washington County share of the recreation arts and parks sales tax.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. That comes to item number 10, which is a commissioner report. And I've invited our tourism office to come here and to, the tour of Utah was here, as most of the drivers in town know. And we were presented with a plaque. And so Brittany, are you, want to come up and talk about that and talk about the event?
And, and before Brittany starts talking, I just want to make a note that Commissioner Iverson is not with us because he's on vacation, but he will be for his next meeting. And, and we're going to make him bring us back some trinket from Mexico to cover for me having to read all of these
Resolution numbers.
That's right.
So as you know, yesterday, the Larry H. Miller Tour of Utah prologue event was held on the Red Hills Parkway. It was a very fast 5K 3.3 time trial. So there were 17 teams, about 117 riders that participated. The winner was TJ Van Garderan and his time was 6 minutes 27 seconds. The event overall was great. Our local organizing committee has been planning it. There's been about 20 members of that committee. We've been planning it since last September. We were kind of happy to have it over with actually, but it was, we had great volunteers more than we even really needed. We had great help from St. George City, obviously. And the event was hugely successful in our opinion. Larry H. Miller, the, the folks from their organization were just absolutely thrilled with Washington County and with St. George City and our level of participation. And I'm sure that they'll be coming back to probably approach us to do it again in the future. So they presented Washington County with a little token of their appreciation. I'd like to give that to you.
Thank you. Find a good place for this.
That was a really spiffy project. I was just amazed to see how big of an event it was. And it reminded me of Ironman or any of these other major sporting events that we do here. And so
Yeah, major
Job very well done. If I didn't give a little critique for you, maybe if you could work on the temperature. I'm thinking mid 80s would
Would be nice, right?
Very nice, yeah.
But we had very few cases of heat exhaustion, so that was good. Everybody, everyone survived and when there were a few issues with, you know, Red Hills Parkway being closed, but that, that will get a little easier if we do it again next year because Bluff Street won't be under such major construction. So that should be helpful, so.
So I was able to go into this, the trailer where they're doing their TV broadcasting. It was broadcast like 50 some odd countries, some of them live?
I got a note from Kevin that said there were 154 countries that were able to watch it.
Okay, wow. It, it was amazing, the technology they had up there to beam it around the world. And, and one guy was handling the, I don't know the technical term, but he was just, every scene, he was like, oh, that's a great scene. Let's send that out. That's a great scene, send it out. And so they just had these amazing reviews that went all over the world about our county.
Just incredible how fast those bikes were streaking.
Oh, man.
Run over that finish line too.
Incredible coverage for Washington County, for sure.
Over 30 miles an hour, uphill and down average on that, so.
Yeah, they were, and they weren't even breaking a sweat, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Then we have one item, other item. We talked about Victor. Is, is Ricky. So Ricky has done an excellent job hinting and, and helping out why Nicole, sorry, not Nicole. Cheyenne went on with the birth of her child. And Ricky, we just want to express our appreciation in open commission meeting about how much we appreciate what you've done. Been a great asset to the commission office in not only helping out with minutes, but just the, your attitude that you bring to the office. And we just wanted to say thank you for
Thank you.
Going the extra mile.
That's an incredible job. And now we know what you
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, with that, I will call the, at this time, there's no other items on the agenda, so I've called the meeting adjourned. Thank you.